Welcome to the April 27, 2023 meeting of the Stockbridge Select Board. Let us stand, if you wish, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. All right. First thing on our agenda is a couple of licenses. Do I have a motion on the Berkshire Botanical Garden licenses?
I'll make a motion that we accept it. Or that we, do we have to?
Grant it?
Grant it.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And how about on Chesterwood, do I have a motion? Anybody want to talk about either of these? Sorry. Nope, good. All right. Do we have a motion on Chesterwood?
I'll second it.
All right.
Look at me.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, let's talk about boat ramp improvements. So, uh, I just want to frame this a little bit. We, uh, we met, we heard from a gentleman named Doug Cameron, who is, uh, who works for the state and is in charge of boat ramps, uh, in this area, maybe, yeah, yeah. And, uh, and for at least the last five years that I was on conservation and then on the select board, the state has been promising to invest in the boat ramp. And then recently we heard from them and they said that there was no money in the foreseeable budget to do so. Want to just talk about the boat ramp for a second? The boat ramp is off of 183, uh, Interlake and Road. It, it serves both kayakers and scholars, including the many folks who want to both, uh, practice for, uh, just use it recreationally and practice for the Josh Billings. It's used by fishermen, some of whom we have in the audience. Uh, it's also used for, by recreational boat enthusiasts. The project, uh, involves improving drainage, uh, bank stabilization and boulder resetting, kayak launches and a new dock and pad for, uh, for folks who, uh, bring it, bring their, their docks in via truck or car, you know, on a trail. Why do it? Dangerous trees are right above where we park the harvester and where folks, uh, access their kayaks. You know, so if one of those trees comes down, we could literally like, you know, have a situation where it landed on the harvester or God forbid landed on a person bringing their kayak in. There's tremendous erosion and loss of bank. There was a lot of the bowlers in the water, uh, and you can see the exposed roots. There's, uh, there's rocks that have come off the bank that are in the water that boats are constantly hitting. We've got slippery concrete, uh, when, when folks are launching their boats, uh, in the submerged, submerged portion of, of the, uh, of the area where people, you know, bring their boats in, causing, you know, potentially dangerous conditions. At least that's what I've heard. And I think frankly, this is just my personal opinion, but I think when you compare it to, uh, uh, the boat launch at Inota and Pontusick and Plunkett and Goose Pond, it's a bit of embarrassment. We've gotten letters of support from this project from the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen and the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club. And finally, uh, DCR estimated the budget to do this was $125,000. Recently informed us they didn't have the money. That, uh, that 125K estimate came from Doug Cameron, who has extensive experience in this. I reached out to him a few days ago and said, if we could come up with a hundred grand, could the state at least come up with 25 grand? And he wrote me back in writing and said, yes, we can make that work. So, uh, it's my understanding that we, we, uh, well, we got these letters and that's my framing of it. And I wanted to kind of get your sense and if anybody wants to speak to it. But let me just hear from them first. Or do you want to, do you want with the public to speak first? Or do you guys have any opinions?
Thanks for doing that, Patrick.
You got it, thank you. Jim, you want to come on?
Jim, all fans with the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club. Patrick, as you know, I was contacted by you regarding, if Stockbridge Sportsman's Club would support this, uh, project. As you know, I polled our board as well as several members who had just recently left the board, but those particular members were extremely active. One of them's in the audience, Tim Minkler, who have been responsible for holding fishing derbies under the auspices of the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club for 35 years or more. Understanding that the, we were told that the idea would be to use ARPA funds for this. It was kind of a no brainer for everybody. We had everyone but one, one member of our, of our board and vote yes. As I found out just a few minutes ago from Gary Johnston, who couldn't attend tonight, um, that he was told that ARPA funds cannot be used because, uh, it's basically a state-owned lake. A little background, as we all know, the DCR and the state, as we all know, are very upset with, I'll just say, the town of Stockbridge and what transpired with the, with the, uh, kind of lawsuit against the SBA and so forth.
Pardon me, I don't know that.
Pardon?
Pardon me, I don't know that.
Yeah, we've been told that. The, the important thing that I want to speak on behalf of the Sportsman's Club is, we are in favor of anything we can do to renovate that. However, it must be known that the vast majority of people who use that boat launch are not residents or taxpayers in the town of Stockbridge. They come from all over, and it's wonderful, they come from all over. To use taxpayers, Stockbridge taxpayer funds to now, if ARPA won't fund it, to fund that, I think is incorrect. I think it's wrong. And consequently, I think that the town should take a new position and that is to start to work on pressing the state of Massachusetts, the DCR, whoever the official entity is, to get them to move ahead. You explained the dangerous trees, the erosion and all of that. I would certainly think if that's presented in the right way, that could go to the top, if not, if not the top, very high on the list of the state of Massachusetts to get this project done and not involve Stockbridge taxpayer funds.
Just so you know though, we have been on DCR for years to make these improvements and they have, uh, they have either put it off, put it lower on the list or as of recently, they've said that they don't have any money in the budget to address in the next several years. I would address, oh, turn.
So maybe we should go over the funding sources and why it changed from what was originally proposed. So it was originally brought up about using ARPA funds. Uh, ARPA funds can be used for municipal per, per, for any municipal purpose, municipal owned land projects and other stuff. If we get, if we use the money outside of the town, and this is on, whether it's on private property, you know, like the library, who, you know, is a private entity or anything else, they have to become sub recipients of the money, so a grant. When I contacted legal counsel, I said, how would we go about this? And they said, well, the state would have to be the sub recipient and they had never heard of the state being a sub recipient of a grant from a community. Talking to, I did speak to Doug Cameron. He, he has no idea how ARPA works, um, and that. Now, um, which then leads to the only other option is free cash because free cash we can use for any municipal, as long as we see a municipal benefit to it, that does become an option.
So Michael.
Another thing I will say is, the state has a number of ARPA funded, they have ARPA funds too. So, you know, in regard to that, there is some possibility of pressuring local representatives because DCR may not have the funds, but is.
So Michael, why can't we, as an option, just to consider, why can't we, uh, take a hundred thousand from ARPA and put it toward the road improvement? And then take a hundred thousand from free cash and put it on this?
Well, this is.
Now, I've just stated that, and that is a.
This is my.
That is illegal, what you just said.
No, 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 that's not.
Let's ask it.
I have a few issues.
All right.
I have questions.
One is, you know, I get an email saying, this is coming up from you. We'll use ARPA money. And we read an email from you, it's almost like the decision's been made already before even, we even discussed it. We discussed this ARPA money intense in the past and we pretty much all agreed to use it for things that help the town, help the taxpayers. So either for grants that we can improve grants and matching grants or to pay for projects that the taxpayers will pay for. This is not a taxpayer benefit to do this. So using, even suggesting using the ARPA money, I think, was not right. Second, it's state land. It's, they know it's an issue. If it's that bad of an issue, they assume it's up on the list. Maybe instead of talking to us, you'd be talking to pick and tellies, you'd be talking to state reps. Talk to the right people. I am not in favor of using taxpayers' money on this because it's, we got too many other projects. We got bridges, we got roadways, we got water and sewer that this money's got to go to, and I would not support any taxpayer's money going to the state project. I support doing the work and helping to get the state to do their part, but Stockbridge should not be paying, taxpayers' money should not be paying for this project or ARPA money, even if you could have. And that's my opinion, it's just that. But I get the feeling that, you know, something comes up and I know you want to resolve it and help people, but it makes me and Jamie look bad when we get to these meetings and you already made your points about using this, using ARPA money, using tax dollars to do this project. We haven't even discussed the project yet. And that's been happening a lot lately and I'm very not happy with it because it makes me and Jamie look like we're always negative on things because it comes out the meeting, we discuss it, you already got your point out there and.
First of all, I was approached by the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen, not the other way around. I forwarded the letter to you. I reached out to the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club to get their opinion. I forwarded the letter to you. And I'm sorry, things happen between the meetings, Chuck. If you want to take over the DCR relationship, we've been talking to them for three years. You're welcome to do it. You know, there's work to do here.
Wait, I have some questions. You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. So the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club, what is the classification? Is it a nonprofit? Is it?
It's for, for profit.
Stockbridge Sportsman's?
Then you pay taxes.
Final one, C four.
I get to ask questions?
We pay taxes to the town.
And you pay to the town?
Property taxes.
Now, are you willing and have you put aside money to help the boat ramps and to use it for the, the fishing derby?
Uh, let me.
I'm asking a question.
Here, let me respond to that if I may. I was contacted by Patrick White, Select Board Chairman, regarding this issue. And I was asked to poll, um, higher sportsman's club.
No, that's not my question.
Repeat your question and I want to answer your question.
Are you willing to help with this project? As if you are a for-profit organization and this is an important project, are you willing to give forward some money?
We don't have the excess funds to be able to fund that project.
So my next point is then ARPA is for everyone and all people, the whole entire town to serve us for the best needs. So it can't just be relegated for any whim project. Thirdly, I'm feeling, we all go to other lakes and we all travel and we go, so to say that other towns should be paying their share for our lake is unfair because it's, it's a state-owned lake. And I take great, I feel that's unfair and it makes us look like we're, we're not being, welcoming or, um, yeah. So that's all I want to say at this moment.
Anyone from the county league want to speak? Are you done?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, well, hold on, sit down, finish up.
Well, the, the only thing I want to make comment, and I started to answer Jamie with that question, is understanding that we were contacted by Mr. White regarding this situation and we're told that if the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club did not approve of the use of ARPA funds, that he would not present the project tonight. That it was important that the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club support this project as well as the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen were going to present this. So we polled the board, as I said, and without knowing the ramifications of it, we approved almost unanimously the use of ARPA funds for it. But that is now off the table. So the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club does not want to disapprove the project. What we're saying is it's time for our Stockbridge Town Administrator and Select Board to try to present to the state the emergency needs of that and have the state fund it.
Along with us doing it, I would like to see you and you guys get a hold of Pick and Telling, those guys too and push it.
Believe me, we'll be happy to help support it. We all want to accomplish.
Do it.
Right.
I think the better off.
We all want to accomplish it.
I'm a hundred percent behind the project.
Correct.
Yes.
I understand.
I'm a hundred percent behind that, using tax dollars money for it.
And Jamie's behind it.
I am behind it, but I think that we can't just willy-nilly throw ARPA funds.
We can't use ARPA. But just to clarify on the ARPA, as Michael knows, I called town council and I asked her if we could use ARPA and she said, yes. One answer, A, let me finish. One, any government purpose. And then as they, as they dove into the question of the sub-grantee agreement, they, they decided that the answer actually wasn't yes. So when I reached out to Jim and, and, uh, and responded to Dan, who's now up at the podium, uh, it was my understanding from town council that we could use ARPA. Now, uh, I, uh, I feel like, uh, personally, I don't see much difference. It's just another pot of money that we have for the, for the town. But Dan, if you want to say something, let's hear it. Can you introduce yourself and, you know?
Twenty-three minutes or? Good evening, guys. Dan Morelli, uh, I've been a delegate to the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen for 35 years and active in pretty much all lakes and ponds and looking at helping municipalities when I see issues of degraded, areas for, which is a natural public resource for everybody. And so the comments as far as taxpayer money, um, you know, shouldn't be used for something. If you were to take a poll of how many members of the town of Stockbridge use the only public access rent that you have there, you're going to find a considerable amount of town of Stockbridge taxpayers' money that do use that facility and that are appalled at the current condition. Tourism in Berkshire County and Stockbridge Bowl and fishing, it's a billion-dollar business. When you look at bringing people to the Berkshires and their first impressions when you see a facility, the first thing you look at is safety for your children, the conditions of your public access that you're supplying to the public. We know you have serious potential safety issues with the erosion of the banks. You have exposed root systems. You've got a huge oak tree that you just lost. You guys got three oak trees that if you don't do something now, you're going to lose all them other two trees because the bank is undermined. So unless a professional comes in and, and it's long you stall, I guarantee you those two trees will be coming down very soon. So again, you've got more bank erosion. You got, the problem now is boats that come into your boat ramp, they have nowhere to moor, they have nowhere to tie up. So they're actually trying to drive the hulls of their vessels onto the bank. So when a boat drives up and hits them rocks, you're doing damage to boat vessels. You have a situation right now, which is the biggest kayak use lake that there is in Berkshire County is Stockbridge Bowl. You have the Brown Derby, you have the Josh Billings. You've got people coming from all over. You've got the basis economic magnet bringing money into the Berkshires with that one event. So everybody's coming down to the event that's looking at the conditions you got down there. And everybody says, oh, what's the state doing? You know, everybody puts the burden on the state. Well, the burden on state comes on the governor and the governor funding projects. Currently, there's no budget and with this current governor, we don't know what the budget's going to be. We don't know who the chairman of the fisheries and wildlife is going to be. They're struggling, they don't have a budget. That's why they don't have money right now. The problem happened two years ago. This project got stalled because people didn't push the project. I was here two years ago, you guys supported it, two years ago. If that project got pushed, this could have got done. The funding potentially could have been there then, but if, if you don't move on something, your budget gets used up. So then you got to relook again for money. Whether it's ARPA funding, which could go to a, uh, a user group, possibly a nonprofit to support this project moving forward, or whether it's free cash, I, I think it comes down to is you can't stall this project anymore. You've got people in place right now that are willing to do most of your homework for you, basically for free. The amount of time I donate in this project already, looking at who your design company could possibly be, the, the best materials to use for this project, to make it a, a, a place that you want to go, whether, whether you're, you're picnicking, whether you want to go there and watch the lake or read a book, it's, it's for everybody. It's not, that's just for fishermen, it's not for canoeers, it's not for kayakers. It's, it's for everybody to use. So when you talk about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for a project like this and the state's got to take in 25? No, with, with the cost of materials, the cost of materials rising, if you wait another year, materials, you don't even know if they're going to be available. We just had a pandemic not that long ago. What that pandemic did is the cost of everything you buy tripled. Right? We're looking at, I'm going to get into politics, whether there's going to be a recession or whatnot, you know, moving forward, but you can't stall projects like this. This, this, this project really needs to move forward and you've got the Public Access Board, which are the professionals that will guide you through this project. And it's done, what I call, in steps and in faith, and it's done that way for reasons. So there is public comment. So first thing that basically is done with the appropriation of funds, even if it isn't all the funds, but the appropriation of funds. And you have a design. And you put your design together and your design company basically says, okay, this is what we suggest for materials, this is the cost of the materials. Then, once you have your design, your design goes in front of Conservation Commission. So once again, in front of CONCON, then you have a better notification, you have public comment. So if somebody wants to tweak a project, the project can be tweaked at a particular time or, you know, somebody has a recommendation, you know, for, uh, an idea that could be incorporated into the design, that would be the time to do it. So once that gets approved, then the project then has to go in front of chapter 91. So now you have chapter 91 permitting, which again is going to take, which they basically gave a timeframe, you know, 12 months to 16 months. If you wait another year, you're looking at two years before you're even, I'm back here again. And these people are back again, basically going through the same thing again. It's trying to get this process moving. Again, so, but two years ago, back here, this is another two years. The project potentially could be done, you know, in a year, in a year and a half, depending how you push your permitting process. And one of the first things that would have to be done first is like the implementation of building a concrete pad, um, as part of the project. Docking systems would be two docks, which would be 20 feet long a piece. So you would have 40 feet of dock. You would look at.
Dan, I think we understand.
So, questions I have is, where does 125,000 come from? Because what you're describing, I would say you go double, triple, even go triple that money.
This is Doug.
Forty, forty-five thousand basically comes from what the cost of Pontusick Lake, the exact same thing.
Cutting.
That is the cost of the docking system.
And this isn't his, this is Doug Cameron who does this. This is his job for public.
Cutting those three, if, I mean, I just.
So, so, so that's your cost, that's your cost of engineering, design in your docks is 45,000 dollars for the docks.
And then it's 80.
The rest of the money is for the design, engineering and.
So the 125 would give us some docks and engineering. It doesn't take.
And the kayaks and, and the bank stabilization.
And bank stabilization.
I just, I just.
It's Doug Cameron's estimate.
I know, but I just know what construction is and that seems very low. Second is, we already put, Stockbridge, I don't know, any other town, I put so much money into this, to the lakes, between harvesting, buying the equipment, dredging coming up. So we're spending already millions of dollars on this lake. So you can't say we're not doing our part and taking care of this lake.
Can I just offer one, well?
I have a question. You go.
So when I spoke to Doug, he thought 40 to 45,000 would be the engineering permitting and everything else, just to get this project going forward. Not the docks, just the part, because a bunch of it's bank stabilization.
All right, hold on. We have a written quote from Doug and he says it's 80 for the bank stabilization, engineering and work, and it's 45 for the dock between permitting and actual installation of the dock.
There's, you know, materials we're going to be using.
So.
What about them?
He doesn't, he doesn't know what materials we're using.
He's giving you the cost of square footage for the bank. So your bank is a particular length. So if you measure a bank and a bank's 80 feet long, turns a certain amount of money, that's where he's coming up with the estimate for the bank stabilization that he's, that he's giving here.
But he has permitting all that tied in. I said, if you took just the permitting, the rep, just a thought, instead of a full hundred, it's going to take a year to get the permitting done. If we were to match what Doug has in money, 25 and 25, we could get the permitting done, well, at the same time over the next year, while the permitting's getting done, push the state for money. And if not, could come back to next year's town meeting and decide where to go then. Because right now, we are talking a lot of hypotheticals. I know it's based on what he's done at other places, so it's probably a pretty good estimate, but we could run into some unique problems with our own facility or whatever, once we get an engineer in there. So I'm just wondering if, I mean, knowing chapter, conservation, DEP, the rest, it's not going to happen in this construction. We're already this far ahead and any funds that we appropriate tonight can't be expended till after July 1st. So, um, town meeting is for next year's budget, not the current year's budget. So I just wonder if that's an option to get the.
I, I'll support anything to move the project along.
And are there any other possible funding areas, either with, in our own town or outside?
I'm just thinking, if you wanted to get the permitting done, so we would know what we're up to next year, along with cost estimates as part of the engineering, if we were to match the state funds, that would allow us to at least get all the engineering permitting and everything else.
What do you have to do with the engineering before the permitting?
Yeah, you'd have to do your engineering and then go for your permitting.
How much?
That's what I'm saying, if, if we appropriate, that can't happen till after July 1st. So there's no way this is happening this season. So it's going to be next season. So if we were to line it up that way, you know.
Your suggestion would be we, we contact Doug and we say, we'll put in 25 for engineering, if you'll put in 25 for engineering.
And then we get it all engineered permitting, engineering and permitting, along with construction estimates.
If we manage the engineering.
75,000.
If we manage the engineering, is that something we could use ARPA for?
No.
No.
No, ARPA's off.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to chat, we'd be given, we'd be working with the, on state property. So we'd have to.
Oh, no, I'm just asking, you know, that's.
So if we only went for a free cash appropriation of 25,000 to move this project forward and then spend the next year leveraging all of us to go after Smitty, Representative Mark, to say, hey, is there a way to get this in the, the next year's budget? So, and by then we'll know our exact dollar amounts. I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility instead of going.
I think it's a good idea.
It is 75,000 we would need.
No, we'd need, not for the engineering.
No, no, after all of that, 125 right now, you said.
Well, based on what Doug has.
Right.
Right.
You have to remember one thing, you're going to have two engineering design costs, one for the ramp and one for the stabilization of the bank you could proceed to.
Yeah, get it all done.
On the project.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I mean, it, it's feasible, um, because that's your biggest challenge as far as timeframe is the permitting.
Right.
Because again, you can get, having a plan done first and your design, your approval from the Conservation Commission. And again, your chapter 91, chapter 91 permitting, that can be like the.
Well, we can't do permitting until we have a design.
Right.
And.
So I had asked him what, if he was to separate out designs, permitting and the rest, he told me 40 to 45,000, that would be all that. So if we were to 25 and 25, state us, we could have it all designed and say the next six to eight months, design, begin the permitting process. And by this time next year, we'd be, here's our designs, here's our plans and here's what we need for funding to get the project done. And then we can go after all the parties out there. I just see that as a way to keep this moving forward because as you said, instead of it stopping.
Sure.
It was a whole nother year again and then you're, you're back, that's it.
So. Match the state.
That's the state with free cash. 25,000 to Not permitting, do the design.
Design and permitting.
Engineer, design.
Yep, engineering, design and permitting.
I'll do the permitting until the town decides, until we know where the money's coming from.
Your permitting lasts typically two years. So that would allow us to then, once it's done, and say eight to nine months from now, all the design permitting and the rest, we would have two years then to find the actual funding to get the work now done.
Okay, we can work on it later. I mean, but I just assumed to have to fund before you do permitting, in case you don't have the funding. Does it cost money to do permitting, correct?
It does.
Yeah.
But if that fails, then you're not going to use the money anyways. So and during the permitting process, the conservation might place restrictions on it or things that they want to see there. Like is that it's just an option to keep at least the permitting, engineering and design moving forward for the next
Once you get the notice of intent from the Conservation Commission, you have three, three years. So you
Tim, do you have a quick point you want to make? Is it a new point?
Yeah.
So any other questions?
Just want to, you know, just stay.
Yeah, first, let me say, I don't think there's anybody in this room or anybody uses the bow or is familiar with it that doesn't want to improve that. So don't misunderstand anything that we're seeing represented in sportsman's club. But I just want to remind you that free cash is not free.
No, it's not tax dollars.
It's Stockbridge taxpayer dollars and the Stockbridge taxpayers have paid for it. That's my only concern.
There's a giant benefit to the bowl, Jim.
I understand benefits, Pat. I'm not here to argue with you. Patrick, you're arguing with me. Let me just say this. We all want that done, but let's do it in the right way, as expeditiously as we can, understanding the state has been dragging their feet.
For five years, yes.
Okay, so let's get the state to move on it. Let's get the state to fund it and let's get it done.
How do you, how do you feel about the 25,000 the taxpayers should do the engineering?
Personally, as an individual, I'm opposed to using any free cash.
I am too.
That's, that's the bottom, because even if you get the design, you're still looking at two to three years down the road. We all know how this works in this state. And it's sad, this should have been done 15 years ago.
We're working 15 years ago.
All right, let's kind of keep it coming, come up next.
My name is Bob McCarthy.
Did you say this? You just called me an asshole. Excuse me, excuse me. I'm making a motion right now that he's being hostile. You just called me an asshole.
Oh, my God.
You just, just called me an asshole.
Hi, Dan. Dan, let's sit down. Order.
I am sorry.
Patrick, Patrick.
That is unacceptable.
Dan, just have a
Unacceptable.
You want to say what you said to me?
Unacceptable.
Can we just stop, guys?
Now.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, calm down.
Crisis on.
I have been a member of the Berkshire County Sportsman for probably 60 years. I'm 82 years old now. And I have been involved in multiple projects trying to improve, to accelerate and to serve the people of our section of Berkshire County, Massachusetts. I don't care if it's Williamsburg, Pittsfield, if it's Lanesboro, if it's Cheshire, if it's Adams, wherever it is. And we work diligently to try to improve people's lives and the beauty of the Berkshires. This is what draws people here. Tourism is our biggest actual moneymaker. Now, the Stockbridge Bowl is an absolute gem. And for the last four years, now I've never been on the Stockbridge Bowl. I've been down and visited. I have seen the boat ramp. And my first question was, why don't they have the accessibility with a dock and whatever, and the improvements that are needed, simply because you do have a lot of people that are compromised, that can't back a boat into that situation. And the water is so deep, how do you get them into the boat? Now, if you have a dock, that opens up the situation where the elderly can get into a boat, the disabled can get into a boat, a family with small children can get into a boat. So it's a win-win situation. If you stop and, like Dan mentioned, if you stop and consider the people that come into the town of Stockbridge that eat at restaurants, that buy fuel here, if you stop and think about the number of people that pay big money to buy, if you can find one, a house that surrounds the Stockbridge Bowl, all those people are paying taxes. I agree with everything you've said and I agree with the town manager here. I think that what we should do now, I probably won't be alive to see this thing built, to be honest with you. I'm 82 now. I mean, I'm on the other one, the other end of this system. But I feel it's almost like elderly people that plant trees. You don't plant them for yourself. You plant them for future generations and for their benefit. And what you're going to do here, if you improve whatever you've got down there, it's going to draw more people. It's going to be an improvement. It's going to be a proud moment for the entire citizenry of Stockbridge. And it does make it a lot better for the entire people that pay taxes in the state of Massachusetts. There's a lot of entities involved down there. You know, I mean, the state puts fish in there. The, the people that live there, the people that come here, I just think that if we all pull together, I agree with you, what we have to do. And if it takes some seed money, whatever you think you can do, let's get the ball rolling. For four years, I've been asking, and every meeting I go, Dan can say, what's going out the Stockbridge Bowl, Boat Dock or the ramp down there? No more excuses. Let's put the pressure on either the state, the access board or whatever. Let's ask ourselves, is it too much to ask to get the ball rolling? Even if it is with the seed money, it'd be great if we've had the money just to fund the thing. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. But I would be just so happy and so grateful. I think that this board took the initiative to say, we're going to do the right thing for the general public. We're all in this together and I hope we can help each other out. Thank you.
Tim, do you have any comments? Thank you.
My name is Bill Gates. I'm the Director of the Greylock Basket Association. We, we do a lot of fishing throughout various states. We're a local South County organization. We have close to 700 members. One thing that I did notice, I do agree with what you're saying. We need to get the ball rolling. We need to get the funding coming from the right organizations. Nobody, if the public's using it, then the state should be involved in paying for it, or at least getting the ball going at it. So if Doug from, Cameron from the state says he's got ideas and he's the state access board design engineer, we should push him a little further and say, okay, well, put us on the list so that we are next in line, because we've been sitting here for an awful long time waiting for this. We don't use the facility at Stockbridge Bowels simply because it causes extensive damage to boats. You can't beat your boat in there. It just tears it up and you got nice boats. You don't want that to happen. So if we could get something going there, one thing that I did notice, you have a boat wash facility at the ball, correct? Who paid for that? Any idea?
I've never researched.
Okay.
So I'm not sure.
I don't know who paid for it, but that was far as you've almost
The town paid for it. They're building one in Pittsfield now. They're proposing one at Pontusic Lake or in Nodale. And you're taking, you're looking at 300, $400,000. You know, so I can imagine yours is in the same ballpark as far as an expense. Now, that's a non-operational piece of equipment that's sitting there that has been paid for with 300, $400,000 of community funds unless the state paid for it. And the reason I'm saying the state could have paid for it is the city of Pittsfield is using their conservation, conservation money from the state to fund their boat wash. So it's on state property, it's being funded by the state through their Conservation and Preservation Act. So there's got to be ways out there that you can solicit for money from the state with those directions. Maybe that's something you could look into. Ask the city of Pittsfield where they're getting their funding from for a boat wash. And if you guys paid for a boat wash for 300, $400,000, somebody dropped the ball when you could have got it paid for by the state, especially if it's being, it's non-operational. So there are, there is money out there that would help your community move this project along. And I agree with the town manager. I think we, we're on board with 100% to help you in any way we can through our sporting groups. And I agree, we should get our politicians and anybody who's willing to push the money before those trees fall down into the water during a Josh Billings or somebody's trying to launch their pontoon boat to set out on the lake. That's what we use it more than anything. We don't use it much for fishing, but you drop your boat so you can sit out on the lake at night and listen to Tanglewood. That, that's where you're going to run into an issue. And the other thing is, who owns the parking lot? Do you folks own the parking lot?
State owns it all.
The state owns the entire parking lot? Because if the state owns it, I would suggest then, then they must have funded that boat wash.
Yeah, look, they just, this has been going on for years, where they promised to fund this and it's been problematic and it's not, never moves up on the list. And then they came out a few weeks ago and said that, that it's not even on the list now. And, and I just feel like it's a resource in the town and it's a little bit embarrassing for the reasons that you all have said. And Chuck, it was your phrase, you know, we're getting things done. And this is as much infrastructure as making a road or making a bridge. It is, it is, I think it's relatively short money to make a giant improvement in the quality of life for the town and in one of our premier attractions. And, and beyond that, if we're using free cash, then it has to be voted by the voters. And I don't see why, if we disagree on whether we should do it, I can vote yes at town meeting and you guys can vote no if you are, you Chuck can vote no, but I would like to bring it to the voters and let them decide.
That's a question.
We're done talking. This is just a word.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Dan, we're done for now. We're going to just can you make a quick, we're going to hold agenda here.
Just one comment, the city of Pittsfield moving forward with what they want to do with the boat wash station, that's taxpayers' money. It's community preservation fund that they're taking the money from to build that project.
And I looked it up and it looks like, I'm not sure how much was spent back in 2011, it was a community preservation project.
It was community preservation. So it was taxpayer money.
And also they're piggybacking out with a $15,000 grant from the DCR. Also on there, and then also $17,500 of that came from the Lake Association. So the Lake Association is actually paying for the design of that. So, you know, there, when we start about, you know, people contributing, other people contributing, there are ways of making money. And I mean, as a, as I said, a 35-year member of the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen, I can say it's an embarrassment to come here to listen to supposedly
Okay, we're not Dan, let's just debate this. We're going to get a vote on it. All right.
They have not attended
Thank you. No, 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 we're not going there. We're not going there. Dan, stop and have a seat.
That's just one of the things we say.
All right.
Um, here, no, no business. So
Dan, come on, have a seat. Thank you. All right.
It's a question, just a question. Is there, and this might be really not thought out, but is there any way to ask the Josh Billings, the Stockbridge Bowl Association, the Sportsman's Club for bits of money to come up with 100,000 we need?
We need 25.
Well, or 25.
Because 100,000 is going to be more than that.
We can do all in any of these things. You know, this has happened late in our funding cycle. First of all, Chuck, I want to apologize to you. I never want to make you feel like how you've expressed you feel. It's not, it wasn't my intent. The question came in from these guys. We, I, this is something that Roxanne and I were working on years ago. And it just is frustrating that like DCR has done this kind of unknown. And so I thought, to use initiative, I, and I, I just wanted to say, you know, if we can't do that this year, it's fine. It's just, it's the end of the, it's the end of the budget cycle. I thought we should try to kind of move it on, see if we can get it done. And if we can't get it done this year, I totally understand. And, 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 and you have absolutely every right to express any concerns or reservations. Sometimes I kind of am more to, you know, act. And I get that. And so I just wanted to say, I was sorry about that. Now, taking a step back, you know, the issue is, as everyone's pointed out, including Michael, is that these projects take years to complete. And we thought we had money coming in from DCR for the last three years, and it turns out we don't. And by the time we kind of build the coalition to fund this, whether it's DCR or the Stockbridge Bowl or the town or whoever, it could take another year or two. And meanwhile, it's kind of, the bank is not going to last. And whatever, I think I made my point.
And we don't, no, we definitely have the 25,000 from the state.
I don't know if we have it if it's just for engineering.
Well, right, but
Oh, we might.
But we, is that a real thing?
Don committed 25 to the project.
So that's real.
But I mean, I have it in writing, but that was based on us coming up with the balance.
Right. And then we have to talk for 25.
We could, we could match it and then say, listen, we're willing to match it.
Yeah.
Let's get this moving forward. Maybe it's the first kickstart to get it going.
And the only way is through the free cash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Or
Right now, for right now.
Because we could have done CPC funds.
Right, but it's for right today.
Once again, we only learned about this. Right, we have other funding sources.
Yes, but for today.
For today, free cash would be
Let's stick with today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what we'll at least do is give us, there's something known as shovel-ready projects. So if we get the design and engineering done, then the ability to go after grants that are shovel-ready and ready to go is, 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 is pretty good. And usually, like I said, plans at least two years. And yes, notice of intents are three years from the conservation.
Right.
So depending on what permitting we need and what other permitting, you're talking at least two to three years then of going after funding, whatever levels. So at least if we didn't try to match that and say to DCR, let's get this all going, then at least, at least by next year, like I said, we would have an idea of the exact cost with the cost estimates and what we're actually proposing and have it approved.
Okay. So even if we say yes, it goes to town meeting, the town has the say to say yes or no.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so it really doesn't do any harm if we push it to the town and let everyone, the citizens, choose, right? There's no cost, right?
Can I make one comment, please?
No.
I think we should just kind of
I need to process. Am I, is my thinking right?
You're right. It's got to go to town vote. So I'm going to record not in favor of it, but I will let the town vote. It's not, I think it should be a town vote.
Just under 25. Just under 25. Just for the engineering.
No more than 25. 25 is the maximum. So
For the fixing of the boat ramp, but I think the citizens should have a vote. And I don't like last minute.
Record I'm opposed to it, but I will not, I think, let it go to the town vote, let the town citizens vote.
So do we need to make a motion?
Someone should make a motion, yes.
I make a
I'm not going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, we, we put on the warrant 25,000 in free cash with a stipulation that there'd be a $25,000 match from DCR for, from public access for the design, engineering and permitting for the boat ramp project.
I second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that was a good compromise. Thank you, guys. And, and I'm sorry for, you know, whatever. Okay, on to the next thing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next thing is, I just wanted to make an announcement on this. We don't need to spend
Start pushing our politicians too, okay?
Yeah.
We'll do it on our end. You do it on your end and let's push it from both sides. Okay.
It's going to shoot, though, anytime. Reach out to the Berkshire County League and we deal with the state entities on a monthly basis. So if there's anything that we can help you do, let us know and believe me, we
Yeah, get, get the money.
Get us a hundred grand.
What is this?
That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Oh, that was surprisingly controversial to me. Okay, on to the next thing. So this is, this is kind of just an interesting thing that Michael and I were talking about this week, which just came up. So Stockbridge somehow got designated as a Justice 40 community, which is a Biden federal grant opportunity related to Biden administration for underserved and, uh, and, and, uh, you know, just kind of, um, for, what does it say? It's, uh, for underserved and, uh.
We don't have enough money for people.
You know, and, uh, and overburdened, marginalized, underserved and overburdened communities. Where, you know, there's some, there's some parts, some wards, there's some wards in Pittsfield and some wards in North Adams that were also designated. But you have to go all the way to Greenfield and Holyoke to find an entire municipality that was actually designated as a Justice 40 community other than Stockbridge. So I don't.
It's a good thing and a bad thing.
Right.
Well, it's good we can get federal grants. It's a bad thing that we're designated as a poor community.
Well, I mean, I, well, look at it as well. So, you know, I think the reality is it's based on the census, it's based on the census and.
I don't think we should have a street party.
I don't, it's based on the census, which is full-time residents. I don't want to get into that around, around, you know, median family income and all that. We talked about that way more than we ever would want to again in this past year. But I will say that it creates some really interesting opportunities. They specifically talk about water and sewer. They specifically talk about affordable housing. And when I talk about affordable housing, I'm talking about the couple of million that Pinewood's might need. They specifically talk about 300 different federal areas where they give priority for these kind of grants. And I just want to point it out, there was no action.
Water and sewer is for plants and not for expansion and not for.
It could be.
Could be if it's going, if it's going.
Exactly what.
If it's going.
Included. It just came out, they designated the communities and now the grants are going to be coming out. We're gonna have to take a look at what.
We really don't know exactly what we, so.
Not yet.
So we're saying that we're gonna be suing the whole town.
Oh, God, no.
Moving everything.
This is about applying for grants.
Let's just see what, what we can, what we can get.
How about a satellite launch facility?
Oh, no, I think that.
Let's wait till the, let's wait till the, till they cabal what we can exactly apply for before we go to the public and say that we can do this and then find out we can't.
There's nothing about what we're able to do, other than there's 300 federal agencies and departments who are making prioritized and my, and, uh, and prioritized grant opportunities to Justice 40 communities. That's up to us then.
We'll go after every grant we can get, but let's see what the criteria is first.
Well, it doesn't, going after grants, Chuck.
You have to do anything today.
Come on, let's figure it once.
Okay.
Going after grants isn't something that just happens. We have to decide to go after them. And I'm suggesting that we start to have a process to discuss the kinds of grants and prioritize the kinds of grants we might want to go after. So that when these opportunities, when, when the, when the, for example, the grant rules are published, we've got kind of a sense of the things we might want to do. And that involves not only the select board, involves water and sewer, it involves potentially parks and recreation. It involves potentially, you know, highway and, and police. Cause you know, Homeland Security is part of this. You know, this, this 300 agencies and departments are part of this. You know, it could be the fire department. I mean, there's a lot of folks who could potentially benefit from this designation, but we're going to need to have a coordinated effort to discuss what our priorities are. Cause we're not going to do 27 grant applications, you know?
We're just.
Michael, do you have something to add?
Available, what we can.
Right, we're, we can find out more. Berkshire Regional Planning noticed that we, so they've reached out to us too to say, hey, come and talk to us. Their, one of their grant coordinators has reached out to us. Well, this is stuff.
I did reach out to Tom and asked him to reach out to us just to see.
Oh, all right. So you jumped, she jumped us and, and that. But we need to talk to them. We need to figure out what we can and cannot do and what the criteria is. Some things will, since it applies to the whole town, probably things like the water treatment plant that services the whole town would be good. Others might be, hey, maybe that sidewalk from Pine Wood, that Main Street, you know, if, since it ties to low. So once we see these programs, it, it could be beneficial, um, really beneficial in the next couple of years.
Are those families on these, who's the tonic powder?
Could be if.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
We're gonna have to look at all those options. So more to come, I guess, is the biggest thing.
Yeah, more to come. Let's see how this unfolds.
Okay.
I don't know what that means.
Well, we don't have any.
I don't know what that means, how that unfolds. It's our job.
Well, we don't have to decide, do we, any?
No, but to see, like, the parameters of what we can and cannot apply for. So instead of wasting our time saying we want to spend, you know, three weeks or a month doing this and then find out that's not part of the, you know.
Well, it says right on, the website tells us what we can apply for. There's an entire website that talks about the kind of projects you can do. So if this is Justice 40 and, but I think.
No, it's great. It's great.
All right.
Okay.
Good. All right. Anybody have any comments on that? No?
No.
All right, good. Um, all right, we got a letter from Lee. Is everyone a chance to read it?
Yes.
Guys have any thoughts or comments on it?
I don't like the sentence. There's a sentence I don't like.
So the public knows we're talking about the Rest of River Lee, sent from the Lee Board of Selectmen to the town of Stockbridge dated April 19, 2023, where they've asked for a meeting.
No.
Sorry.
I want to just.
You're right.
I don't like this sentence. Our board has much concern over the legitimacy of the, our Rest of River Committee as well as its members' relationship and responsibility to the respective select boards that they serve under.
Yeah.
Let's say we take no.
I take a no.
What does it take? No, uh, it's kind of a memory we have to say now, no action.
No action.
That is an option.
No action.
The only.
Take no action.
No.
Can I, before we vote, the only action I would support is a, is a discussion among all the towns. I am not in favor of a one-on-one meeting.
Okay, that would be, I would be better with that. What?
Well, I just feel like, uh, you know, if we're in a table, uh, you know.
Motion for what?
To not take action?
I made a motion not to take action.
I second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that was easy. Next thing, operating capital budget, final discussion. Michael, you had some things you wanted to add?
Just, uh, so, um, as far as the operating budget, I did note that the, the, the pump station payment wasn't in there for the sewer. So I had to add that to the operational budget. Of course, that adds exactly this, it, it doesn't affect the taxpayer anything because that 46,000 will be added as revenue and added as an expense because it'll be pulled from sewer receipts. So I needed to correct that. And now this will be, I will add the $25,000. You have a sample number eight right here on this one, where I had the 100,000, but I will word it now the way it was worded.
Oh, right.
Adding that to the discussion for town meetings. So that will, um, that will set the meeting. So I will make the change to number eight and.
Good.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, so, uh, we're, I, I, I believe I signed the, the sheet on the warrant. You guys signed that? So I think that we're set with this one change. Uh, delete a motion to accept the warrant or anything like that, or we just all did? I think we already did that last meeting.
We did it, right?
Yeah, but we'll probably with the change.
Make a motion with the updates that we, uh, we approve the warrant.
That's stuck in it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So our last thing is public comment. Do we have any, uh, public comment, Harold?
Hello, sir. Harold French, I want to bring up today on Memorial Day. It's getting harder and harder to pull Memorial Day together. We have almost no bets left in town. Um, my stockage and whose tag are having no parade this year because they don't have the ability to participate. And the bets we have are all getting old. I mean, I think our youngest bet we've got right now is in their sixties. We had a speaker lined up, speaker backed out. We thought we were going to have to all have, go back to having the, uh, potluck picnics. We found out they can't have it. Even though we had the blessings of, uh, Port of Health and the Try Town Health, the Try Town Health backed out on speakers today. Can't even find a bugler for doing the honors at the cemeteries. This is getting more and more difficult. So what we're proposing is, uh, is we have a rotating parade. Is it, we could put the four, the name of West Stockbridge, who was signing from Great Burton in Stockbridge. And we rotate, you only have a parade once every four years.
Great Burton as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Great Burton right now is, um, having a, Stockbridge almost having a parade this year. But it's getting harder and harder to put things together. So we're gonna have, we'll have one of the students from the, in the band will do the, uh, the play, do taps at the two monuments. That'll be it. So we're gonna try to somehow get something together to do the taps in the cemetery for the parade. Right now, I like to think we can find some money, I think it's about $800 to buy electronic bugles. So we can, I'm saying we could do it. It's not as good as the real thing, but it's better than nothing.
And is it, but is not your intent to cancel the parade this year?
No, no, no. I don't, I don't want to cancel any year, but what, you know, American Legion Stockbridge died at the hands of the Selectmen back in the eighties. The American Legion used to meet now at the old fire station at Church Street. The Selectmen got the idea that they wanted to sell the building. So, but under, under federal law, the American Legion has to be given a place rent-free by the town to meet.
Yep.
So they said, well, meet in park to hall. So what we do with weapons? Well, store them in the police station. Okay, that sounds reasonable. So they stored the weapons in town hall, in the police station. Next year, it came parade time, with the weapons, they were gone. Billups, I'm giving them all away. Those, those weapons were unloaded from the US Army.
All right.
But anyway, so that broke, that broke the spirit of American Legion. They were gone. All done.
They had to, they had to police the, you know, the, oh, they got three crowds, so maybe use it for the.
Those things, those weapons are like, wait, replacing today are like 800 something dollars apiece.
Yeah. I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Obviously, there's a lot more, you know, sort of, um, ceremony around a Memorial Day parade than a July 4th parade.
July 4th parade is like, parade, we won, you know, so.
I understand.
And then go. Memorial Day is like, like extension of a funeral.
Yeah, it's exactly my point. My point is, I don't want to lose an annual spring slash summer parade in the town. And if we were going to do a Memorial Day parade only once every four years, I would probably be inclined to create a July 4th parade committee so we could at least have one summer, late spring, summer parade in town. Cause I think it's a tradition that having at least one festival that brings everyone together.
Years ago when they did the, uh, anniversary of Stockbridge, 250th, maybe?
Yeah, I don't want to just do it every 250 years.
Finish please. The Selectmen said they were gonna make that happen every 10 years. They go five years, 10 years, never happened. They never redid it.
Right, well, you know, uh, yeah, we're all young. I mean, the Stockbridge's grand reth anniversary is in 2034. Maybe we'll still be on the board then and we can, you know.
No, I won't.
Listen, we're not gonna make, we're not gonna take any action on this, but I, I do believe that, what? I do, just let me finish. Like, you know, the, I would, if, if this is gonna be the plan, I think it's a good plan based on the ceremony around Memorial Day. But in that case, my suggestion would be that we start to at least think as a group about whether we want to add a July 4th parade that would be easier or be just festivities without, without the, you know.
What we would do, if you put up without a parade, we would do the honors at the cemeteries and the monuments. But we wouldn't have a parade. I mean, even, even though school's getting harder and harder to get up, they've had to join the two bands together, get a band together. You know, middle school and high school. People deserve to get involved in more like this.
Rich. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Does one have to be a veteran to be participating in the parade committee?
No, we've been advertising for months now, looking for, looking for help.
And aside from the honor guard that you would need for, for, um, is it required that veterans be those that speak?
There's no requirements, no.
Okay, okay.
What we try to do is we try to get speakers that aren't going to go political on us.
Sure.
Something appropriate for the day.
I want to read the Gettysburg Address, you know?
It was a speech. What we're gonna, we're trying to do.
Put a speech by somebody. I think his name was Lincoln.
That's already been done. We used to get, we used to get kids from the school, but couldn't get any this year. It's been a pass several years.
But we're all set for this year, right?
No.
We're not.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. You're not listening.
I am listening. I had Kirk Nichols in here telling me we're all set a half an hour ago. But if we're not, tell us why we're not.
This is Harold.
We're not all set. We don't have, we don't have a bugler. We don't have a speaker. We don't, we need three people to read, read the annual piece of poetry down in front of us. Do a, do a park to hall.
Okay.
One, two, three.
It's kind of harder and harder to get people to be involved and help out.
All right. So is there a specific, why don't we talk offline about what the, the list is? And if you want any help with any recruitment of the.
We've been asking for months now for help. Nobody's, only very few people responded.
I haven't been asking. We can ask.
No, it was, it was right on the town, the town website.
Yeah, yeah.
Patrick.
I'm sorry. Yes, just one thing. Harold, if you get in touch with me, we, we have funds. We can get an electronic bugler.
Okay, great, great. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. I'm listening and we'll, we're gonna work it out and get you the help you need.
Thank you.
All right. Rich, you had a comment?
Sign me in.
With our next meeting is the 11th of May, right here in this room at 10:30 AM.
All right.
And the 20th of May is when we put the, uh, flags off the cemeteries to make sure that the markers where they're supposed to be. It would be, if it's stolen, whatever.
All right. Mr. Bradway.
Hi there.
Yes.
So I'm here today, I'm just running out all my notes here. My name's Rich Bradway and I'm a town resident and I'm also the president of the Stockbridge Land Trust. I have been to you a couple of times with respect to work that we're doing to, um, secure the acquisition and conservation of Fen Farm, which is the northern tip of Monument Mountain. Uh, I'm here today to let you know that the, uh, Stockbridge Muncie community is planning to make an offer on that land. And they're using, and they're also applying for an MVP grant, which is a municipal vulnerabilities program action grant to assist them, to assist them with not only the purchase of that land, but also the conservation of the land, as well as some additional due diligence and other things they would like to do with respect to, um, uh, not only the acquiring of the land, but also to, to, to establish a more, I don't want to say permanent presence, but a much more, um, steady and consistent presence here with respect to managing that land. The reason why I'm here today is because the, the land trust and the Berkshire Natural Resources Council, who has also been here before with me, has been working with the Stockbridge Muncie community to help them and assist them with the sort of logistics of, of the work that needs to be done here while they are working remotely from Wisconsin. And so one of the, uh, elements of the grant that, uh, is, uh, it's not required, but it is certainly recommended is that the, the community, Stockbridge Muncie community, secure letters of support for their work to acquire this land using the MVP grant. The Stockbridge Land Trust has already written and submitted a letter of approval, a support for the, the community. Berkshire Natural Resources Council will be also submitting one as well. The grant application is due next Thursday at 2:00 PM Eastern Time. And, um, I'm here because, um, there was a request from Monique Tyndale,